Y'all, you know who it is. It's your boy Smooth Cooking Up 215. Where we get you up closer personally with your favorite artists, entrepreneurs, shakers, and move makers. And boy, we got one of the city's biggest move makers. You know what I'm saying? A lawmaker in the building today, man. We got city council president, Kenyatta Johnson in the building. Listen, man, we never had a president in here. The first time for everything. You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Black president, my brother.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Salute to that right there, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, sir.
It's crazy because I don't think a lot of people know your background and where you come from to be in the position that you are in now.
Yes.
You once was a troubled young brother yourself.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Outside, you know what I mean? Being a little hooligan with the hooligans.
Yeah, yeah. First and foremost, one, thanks for having me. And you know, for me, I took a different path than most elected officials. Born and raised in South Philadelphia.
Right, ATV Dickerson.
Yeah. And in 1998, cousin of mine got murdered to gun violence. Started a program called Peace Not Guns. Start teaching young people conflict resolution, anger management, anti-street education. Had the opportunity to go away to college. Went to Mansfield University. I got a degree in criminal justice with dual minors and philosophy in sociology. Also went to University of Pennsylvania. Went to Penn. Got my master's degree there in government administration and public finance.
Wow.
And also went to Harvard Business School.
Hey, you went to Harvard Business School.
Absolutely. Got a certificate in non-private leadership and board management. But I got my first gun charge at the age of...
I was about to say that before we...
Yeah.
You know, I was glad that you said it. You know, I got all a lot of that stuff in my notes.
Absolutely.
But I was glad that you said it because you caught a gun charge at 16.
At 16, yeah.
And a lot of people think that when you get something as immaculate as that on your jacket, that you can't come back from that. Or they think that from there, it's over. You're getting regular jobs. You can't go get no real good education and everything like that.
Yeah.
You managed to go to Harvard and get a certificate.
My whole trajectory came from when I got the gun charge, I had a judge named Reynolds.
Okay.
Right? And the judge gave me an opportunity to be on probation. And then from that point forward, I started thinking about some of the choices that I was making. And I only went to college to be a probation officer because at that time, I wanted other young people to know that just because you make a mistake, it shouldn't define who you are, right? It shouldn't define if you become successful or not. And so for me, I just said, I'm gonna go to college, right? My probation officer's on my top. She used to come out, jump out on the corner.
Did?
See what I was doing. And so I said, alright, let me focus on doing something.
She was popping up on you for real?
Popping up on me. But at that time, I'm looking at you being annoying. But for me, it was a probation officer that cared, right? Wanted to see what I was doing with my life. So I decided to apply to go to Mansfield University. And then while I was in school, like I didn't come from a political family. Nobody in my family ever been involved in politics. But I went to school, took a political science course and start learning about the power of the Constitution and how I could use public policy to change my neighborhood. And from there, just came back and decided to use my degree to improve the quality of life of the people that I grew up with, but most importantly, my neighborhood.
So what made you go that route though? Like how you go from getting a gun charge to now kind of wanting to be part of the system that a lot of people feel like would be the oppressor or the reason they even got the gun charge? You know, a lot of people gonna say it's the city.
Absolutely. Because for me, right, I recognized early on, I was sick and tired of being sick and tired of seeing us being murdered by us, right? So even separate from me getting a gun charge, when I started my program Peace Not Guns, not only did my cousin get murdered, but several of my homies got murdered, right? And so I became the change that I wanted to see inside my neighborhood. So what does that mean? I started teaching young people conflict resolution, anger management, and most importantly, anti-street education. Because more than anything else, it's about the streets. And the streets don't love nobody back, right?
Right.
And it's very, very alluring, right? And anybody that tell you that they wasn't having fun even in the street, they probably lying, right? Because for me, at least for me personally, for me, just growing up in that environment, the allure, the gear, the clothes, the women, right, just growing up, all that can be alluring. And also your homies. Because if we be real, most of the people we grew up with, we grew up from the sandbox till we graduate from high school, if we even graduate. But for the most part, these are people that become your family.
Right.
And so for me, once I went away to school, I decided that my degree will be best used empowering and helping us. And so from that point forward, I dedicated my life to showing people that you can utilize the government, our system, to improve the quality of life of our people.
Yeah, that's crazy. So how old would you say you was when you started Peace Not Guns?
I started Peace Not Guns in 1998.
So how old?
It was after college.
You like?
Probably my early twenties.
Early twenties.
Probably my early twenties.
You was on it still early.
My early twenties. But I still had to work on making the transition from the street to becoming a quote-unquote "young professional," right? Really looking at it as that, you know, most of the people that I grew up with and the people that I'm still cool with now, right, are people I've always associated myself with. But also in developing to a man and as a young professional, right, from a positive standpoint, I had to get mentors to support me. So my first mentor was a gentleman by the name of Hardy Williams, right? He was the first person legitimately to run for mayor here in the city of Philadelphia without the permission of the Democratic Party.
Is Mastery named after him?
Yes, yes. The Hardy Williams Mastery.
Yeah, in West Philly.
Charter School, yes.
My son go there, that's great.
Oh, that's what's up.
Yeah.
Honorable gentleman, former state senator, former state representative. And he took me under his wing. Because even though I talk about the education part, when I met him, I had one foot in the street, one foot going to Penn. So I always did my work. I just got like threes in class, right? But I still did my work, right? And when I met him, he was saying, what you wanna do with your life? Well, I said, one day I wanna run for office, right? And I began working and organizing with him. He starts showing me the art of community organizing. And most importantly as well, I do this work because also we got people that came before us. Our ancestors died for us to vote, right? Our ancestors died for us to make sure we get a quality education. And so although I like having fun, I also know the seriousness about the work that we do. Because at the end of the day, somebody gotta fight for us.
Right.
No one's gonna save us but us. And so the work that I'm doing is a passion of mine in terms of how can I empower us?
Yeah.
And most importantly, provide those opportunities. Because a lot of times, I don't think, a lot of times, people make decisions based upon their surroundings, right? And the opportunities that's afforded to them or not. I believe for me, my role was to make sure you're advocating and fighting to put those opportunities in front of our people.
No, facts. We definitely need opportunities. And I really feel, I've seen a lot of things where they talk about expungement and fixing your record. But I feel like it may be hard for some people. I don't think it's easy to get through it. Because I myself, I have a record.
Yes.
And I once started the process and started to go through it. And it didn't, it was deterrent. It was deterrent. I never made it through it.
But let me ask you this still, right? You know, the way I became, and let me give you this little small part of my back. When I talk about the education part, I am the city council president and I enjoy it, right? Though a city of 1.5 million people, right? But also, I'm a district council person. I represent South Philly, Southwest, and parts of Center City, right? I represent the Flyers, the Sixers, the Phillies, the Eagles, the Navy Yard, the airport, and the port. So my district is the economic engine here in the city of Philadelphia. But here's why I say all of that. I only got to this point because I took all that energy that I had when I was in the streets and applied that positively, right? And so did I run into barriers? Absolutely. Couple times I ran into barriers, right? But my challenge would be, you gotta just keep at it, keep at it. Even when you talk about pardons and expungements, right? Like even right now, this is the best time to apply for a pardon. We ain't even talking about expungement. Expungement is like the misdemeanors. We wanna go after the hard stuff. The hard stuff, you got that felony, you pretty much can't participate in a lot of different things, right?
There we go. That was the problem.
But when you say, well, now you're part of a system that most people look at as a system that holds us down or don't provide us opportunities in terms of the government, right? Now, more than any other time with this governor, which is Governor Josh Shapiro, right? It's the time to apply for a pardon. There's a lieutenant governor by the name of Austin Davis. He just came out with an act that make it easier for brothers that's looking to get a pardon to go through that process. And so for me, I would say just keep at it, keep at it. And I'm pretty sure, as long as you stay at it, right, and people see your sincerity, you got your character letters, people speaking very highly of you, then I believe that you will be successful. But keep at it. Because that's, one part you said is true. There's parts of the system that don't wanna see us succeed. I mean, that's a fact.
It becomes a point where you jumping through the loops and the hoops to get something off your back. That's something I did when I was 20. I'm 35.
Yeah.
I'm 36, matter of fact.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? My son is now in the age of which when I done the dirt I did, and I still gotta wear this thing.
Yeah, it shouldn't be a lifetime sentence.
I feel like it should be like credit.
Shouldn't be a lifetime sentence.
It should just be, just like your credit score. After seven years, you know, the old shit drop off. You get what I'm saying? It just never happen no more. And I ain't get in trouble in seven years. I ain't got nothing new on there. I should have an 800 right now.
I understand.
I'm a law-abiding citizen. You get what I'm saying? I'm stopping at red lights, everything. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yes.
But yeah, I feel like, man, that's, I think that that's something city-wise, period, that we really need to kind of work on. I mean, y'all may work on it, and y'all, like you just said, they putting out pardons. I haven't even heard about it.
Yes.
So I feel like sometimes there is a huge disconnect on what's available to us versus what we know is available to us. And somebody helping us realize and know that.
I agree a thousand percent.
And getting us through that. You know what I mean?
I agree a thousand percent in terms of making sure, I say it's our responsibility in terms of those who are elected, those who are in leadership positions that work within the city, to make sure we're doing everything possible to get that information out. I know Councilman Curtis Jones Jr., my colleague, he just did an event with Elevation 215, an organization in West Philadelphia that specifically focused on expungements and pardons, right? She brought, and he brought in different artists to perform and really try to focus on. I think they had like a celebrity basketball game, right? To try to still reach that population of individuals, right?
Right, right, right.
To get the information. And most importantly, make it an event that people wanna come to and not only have a good time, but also participate and find out, how do you get your record expunged? How do you get a pardon? But we definitely continue, can do more, we can do more in terms of making sure people get the information.
Yeah, I feel like we in a special space right now where I guess you could say because of social media, that the connect or the disconnect, I should say, is not as bad as it was. Like even having you here, you get what I'm saying? That's different.
Yes.
To be able to sit and have this conversation.
But I'm a fan too, so I ain't got no problem saying that.
I appreciate that greatly, man. I appreciate that greatly. But I really think that that helps change things. Because now, as people who watching, they might be able to get some answers. Or I might be able to get something discussed to you that normally don't get to reach the areas that it needs to reach.
Absolutely.
Because I think that, you know, our city, I think it's getting better. You know, that drill scene has calmed down. The violence is not as bad as it was. But shit was going, it was bananas for a minute.
I would say, right, when you talk about gun violence, that's one of the key areas I'm very, very passionate about, right? And I look at addressing gun violence to addressing poverty. Addressing poverty by providing opportunities for not only jobs, but building generational wealth, right? But also, we are at, you know, and I'm not touting it, but just based upon, I believe, the work that we've done in the city over the last three to four years, right? We're at a historical low when it comes to homicides and shootings, right? Now, do we celebrate? No, not at all. But we have, we are examining, what do we think is attributed to, why are we seeing some of the shootings and homicides going down? Prior to me, becoming the city council person for my district, we weren't investing in what I call boots-in-the-ground organizations. That's organizations like Mothers In Charge. No More, which is called New Options, More Opportunities, right? Unity in the Community, organization that just took 30 to 40 kids to Ghana, right? Out the neighborhood to see something different, right?
That's crazy.
We invest in these organizations heavily, right, with millions of dollars because we recognize that we're not gonna rest our way out of this situation, right? And mass incarceration doesn't benefit anybody, right? Because if you lock somebody up and they're not receiving the type of support that they need while they are arrested, or while they are incarcerated, when they come back home, it's the same cycle. So we started investing early on, what we call boots-in-the-ground organizations. And there's several of them across the city that we invest in that I believe contributed to the downspire that we're seeing. But now is the time to put our foot on the gas even more, right? Okay, let's double down those efforts. At least that's my mission, you know, as the council president. But also, most importantly, I'm a black man growing up in the city of Philadelphia like everybody else. I got two black sons I'm raising in the city of Philadelphia. And with my pedigree, I could have decided to move a long time ago. Like, you know what? Let me go out to the suburb, my family pull some grass, right? But I love our people and I'm very, very passionate about using my God-given talents to help us.
That speaks, that speaks volumes, just to stay in it. Because you know, a lot of people try to act like they want better for us, but then you all the way over there. You already know what we going through down here.
I'm still in South Philly.
You get what I'm saying?
I'm still probably wanna shoot and go to the poppy store.
Yeah.
I can go to a dice house and just say hi to everybody. I don't play, but still say hi. And I can go in any bar in my neighborhood, right? And still be respected, right? But they also know, I love the people I serve as well, you know what I mean? So I'm not playing a pile of tricks and the games, you know what I mean? My guesses, my guesses, my knows, or I knows. And I'll go out my way to help anybody that wanna help themselves because somebody took time to help me. I didn't just get here on my own. Like I said, my mentor Hardy Williams, he took me under his wing.
Yeah.
And because I'm first and recent college graduate, right?
Of your family?
Yeah, first and recent college graduate. So, you know, everything for me was from the mud, you know what I mean? Like just learning, figuring out how to apply for financial aid, you know what I mean? And also, you know, I give my family some credit, you know what I mean? Because, you know, my mom, God bless her soul, my grandmother, you know what I mean? Good step-pop, you know what I mean?
It takes a village, but it definitely takes that one person to finally show everybody that this can happen.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
The show by example. And I think that that's powerful in itself too, just showing the kid that you can go from that to this. Because I feel like that's, Philly is one of them cities where we gotta see it to believe it.
That's the key.
You get what I'm saying?
Because it's like, and way before I became the council president, way before I became a district council person, I also was a former state representative. So I used to also represent South Philly and Southwest and Harrisburg, right? Under Governor Eric B. Delano Gani and the governor named Tom Corbett. And so for me, my passion has always been, again, that trajectory from being on probation and then saying, okay, I'm gonna go to school and I let it defy me, right? Is to just show the next person, if I could do it, right, I know you can do it. And then now, when I'm talking and I'm going to different schools, I really recognize, if I can do it, these kids have so much potential to do way more than me, right? Because when I was coming up, we ain't have social media at the palm of our hands to do the things that this generation is doing right now.
Facts. They got access to so much information, they so much knowledge. And that's the thing too, is like, man, if I knew, we always say, if I'd have known this ten years, man, if I'd have had this, I'd have been in a whole different place. So now you got kids who get that jumpstart and get that head start before anybody else.
Let me put a pin on this one part, right? Point you just made is so, so important. When you said, if I'd have known then, what I know now, right? But that's why it's incumbent upon us to teach that next generation, right? A lot of them don't have a cool, right? A lot of them always looking for some level of guidance, right? And, you know, I know how it is when, you know, somebody might give you some advice and you got your own hard head.
Right.
So you gotta touch that socket. When mom or dad said, don't touch that socket, once it zap you, then you say, you know what, I'm gonna do something different. But I'm also a firm believer, right? When you sincere and you pull somebody to the side, and you had those conversations with them, you helped them navigate. Just life, just in general, that's one of the key ways we're gonna improve our generation. That's the key ways we're gonna save this generation of young people. That we do see, like I did talk about the gun violence and what's going down. But I also recognize we seen a spike in juvenile gun violence. That's just the juveniles that's carrying, right? And a lot of it comes from what you just talked about. We see the drill music that's taking place. I see the trolling. I follow all the different sites, right? And I pay attention. I'm saying, wow, this is a kill culture, right? But it's incumbent upon us to be the ones that wrap our arms around these young brothers and say, that's not the direction to go into. Are we gonna save all of them? No, not at all.
Right.
But you'll grab one here, two here, three here, four there, just show them that there's another way. And most that I talk to, most don't wanna be out there anyway, most. You might have two that's like, I'm riding, it's just whatever.
Right.
One or two, at least when I had those personal conversations, I'm trying to find a way out. You know what I mean? And that's another part that I'm passionate about, particularly with young people. How can I, I figure, if I can give every young person in the city of Philadelphia a gig, that's like the type mission I'm looking at.
Right.
An opportunity to be gainfully employed. I ain't talking about no 7:25 an hour, like gainfully employed, right? You come home, you tired.
Yeah, you ain't got no time.
You get a trade job, you in the laborers, electricians' union, you know what I mean? Operating engineers, you working all day, doing an apprenticeship program, and then get a job. You come home, I'm tired. I don't even wanna be outside, right? So that's like my main mission, you know what I mean? That I'm focusing on as I go into my new council session.
And I think, I think that's really the start, man. The start is, like you said, giving people that way out. Because even when we look at drill and we say like, it's a culture, or it's something that they doing to be cool, the dudes who starting this, they thinking of it as a way out. They thinking that if they get the rep for doing this, yeah, and they gonna get the views, they gonna get the clicks, and that's gonna lead to the bag, and a deal down the line. If they live to see it, that's the problem. You get what I'm saying? But a lot of people just don't know how to get the money. And I feel like if we open that lane and we show them and we give them the opportunity to get that money, a lot of people just want the bag.
Yeah, absolutely.
If they know it's a cool, easy way to go get it, I don't need to risk my life.
Yes, that's right.
I could go ahead and go get this and secure a hundred K a year or something like that. Oh, I'm cool. I'm gonna do that. So I feel like that's definitely a major part. But before we wanted to get deep, I wanted to let the people know, like, what is it? What does your job entail as the president of the city council?
So as the president of the city council, I represent 16 other hard-working council members in the city council, which is a legislative branch. And we work to provide and put forth legislation just to improve the quality of life for the city. So we pass bills. Those bills become laws, right? We also work in partnership with our mayor in the city of Philadelphia, which is on the executive branch. And so we work to make sure that when legislation comes to our body from the administration, that that legislation is either supported or we critique it to make sure that it's conducive and supportive to what my members wanna see in city council. But also, I work to make sure that I'm representing my members' interests in terms of the policies that we wanna see here taking place in the city of Philadelphia. Like today, we just had a press conference making sure we addressing the issue of supper and funding and how it's upending everybody's lives right now because the reduction of services, right? The increasing of affairs that are going to take place. That's gonna particularly have an impact on people that live in neighborhoods that look like you and I are throughout the city of Philadelphia. And then just in general, it's gonna be disruption to how the city moves forward. For instance, I think there's a game going on this evening with the Phillies, right? Or next week, we got the Eagles game where you normally will have 15 to 20 trains running. You're gonna probably have like seven. So what does that, what happens? Now you gotta back.
It's gonna be crowded, yeah.
It's gonna be crowded, you know what I mean? So advocating on a variety of different issues like funding or supper, I have a task force around food insecurity. You'd be surprised how many people go to bed hungry. You'd be surprised how many young men that I talked to that said, some of the shootings or robberies started just because I was trying to get something to eat. This is like real conversations and roundtables happen with young people, right? So we got a food insecurity task force that I work on to make sure that no family goes to bed hungry. Addressing the issue of diversity, equity, and inclusion, right? And that's specifically around making sure that black and brown businesses thrive here in the city of Philadelphia. One aspect about our city that has to be addressed is that we're the largest, poorest, big city in America, right? So we got a lot of work to do to make sure that black and brown businesses have a seat at the table and also we're building generational wealth, right? And that's something I'm very, very passionate about, just making sure that any major projects that not only come through my district, but also come through the city. I'm always advocating to make sure that black and brown people have a seat at the table by the percentages of minority participation goals that's required of whatever development project that comes through our city. Because for me, that's the best way to address poverty is by building generational wealth, right? And so those are some of the key types of policy initiatives that we work on in city council. And obviously around the issue of, you've gun violence, I'm very, very advocate. I'm very, very strong advocate around just because it's just something near and dear to me.
Okay. So let's say when people feel like the city felon them and they going through this, they going through that. Are you or the people under you, the 16 people you said you represent, are, would we be taking our grievances to them?
So let me break it down also.
How do we get changed? You know what I'm saying?
Great question. And also, as the council president, over 16 other council members, you have a total of 10 council districts, right? And then you have, the rest are at-large members, right? Five at-large members. And so with that being said, each council person represents a certain part of the city. And they will respond to your particular issue, right? And so whatever your issue may be, just reaching out to your district council person, telling them what your issues, your concerns are. And for the most part, at least the members that I know in city council, I stand on this, work very, very hard to address their issues, their constituents, issues and concerns. Is it gonna be perfect? Not at all. You dealing with a system as well, right? Because they may feel very passionate about addressing your issue, right? But once they go into that system now, it's our job to stay on top of it though. To make sure it don't fall through the crack. But every now and then, something may fall through the crack. But for the most part, we work very aggressively to address the issues and concerns of our constituents.
Yeah, because I think it's definitely this thought of where the minorities feel unrepresented even though we count so much.
Yes, absolutely.
Like there's nobody in government really truly looking out for the small guy. At least that's how we feel.
Yes.
Like if we have issues, we don't know who to talk to. We just take it on the chin.
I'll say this, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start with the most basic part first. You ready to vote?
I am.
Okay. That's where, I believe that's where it starts at, right? Because once you sign up, right, and you register to vote, you're part of that process, right? Now you play a role if this person gets back in office or not, right? And as elected officials, we pay attention to who vote, right? Because some folks that come down there, do the hoopla, this, 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 and that, you look them up.
You ain't even vote.
Ain't even voting, right? They loudest person inside the room, right?
Yeah.
And so that's the first part in terms of accountability, right? And then the next part I would like to say, and I'm always, you know, a straight shooter when I say this, right? But also as elected officials, we have to do our due diligence to make sure our constituents know that we out there working on their behalf, right? Rather that's social media, rather that's mailers, rather that's commercials, rather that's town halls, right? Rather that's canvassing the neighborhood, letting your constituents know about what you're actually working on, that's how you make sure that that connection is there. And so I always would say, if there's someone who feels as though they're not connected to the elected official, then go out and reach out to your, like, have you ever called their office? If you haven't gotten a response, have you gone back and said, I'm not leaving till I actually talk to the person I actually voted for, right? And hold them accountable. And once you hold them accountable, and don't give us a pass because we look alike, right? Well, y'all cool, we, no. Hold them accountable, hold us accountable irregardless. Because at the end of the day, your vote stands for something. Your vote matters. And that's your voice, right? And so, and that's what got me involved in politics. When I was in college and I learned about the power of the Constitution, right? And I'm like, really? And I learned about public policy. So I said, well, you mean to tell me if I went home and I organized my neighborhood and this particular issue I wanted to address and based upon me organizing, right? And getting a law passed by that elected official to address the issue, I can make a change in my neighborhood? They said, yeah. And I started looking at other examples, all around, not only all around the city, but all around the country of how the system works, but you gotta work the system, right? And when people feel disconnected, right? I always say, you gotta hold them accountable and hold their feet to the fire to do their job.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the next step, man. Because even when it come down to like bigger politics on a larger scale, when we talking about the president and all that shit. But then we talk about lobbying and how the people who lobbying, they getting what they want pretty much. And since we don't lobby in a sense, you know, our community, we hold no power.
I would back to this.
That's what it comes off as.
I'm gonna tell you how, right?
And so it seems as if we always the less to, to get anything.
I'll tell you this, right? It depends on what we want to organize around, right? It depends on the issue at hand. We're very vocal on certain issues. Depending on what that issue is, we step up to the plate and we organize around. Like for instance, even around the issue of us investing millions of dollars, particularly around gun violence, right, in the city. It wasn't always that case. But when I got elected, even though I was passionate about it, it was a group of individuals, right? Guy named Emmanuel Bussi, another guy named Vila Kaiu, these activists in the neighborhood that will come down every week giving us the business about, we can't keep arresting people, right? How come we're not putting money in the, in the boots in the ground organizations, the grassroots organizations who are out there actually saving our babies from being murdered, right? They, they came out advocating, organized, not paid. Because they saw there was a need and we responded as elected officials to make sure now, before we were giving boots on the ground organizations like ten thousand dollars. Now organizations, I've seen in the past get a million plus just to do their work. Never, never been done in the city of Philadelphia before, cause before it was, we could just lock them up, like that was the method to address gun violence and crime in general. You lock them up, everything will go away as opposed to investing in the actual person on the front. And so I would say, right, to everybody that's listening, if you have an issue that you're very, very passionate about, right? Organize around that issue and I, and I believe, hold your elected official accountable. And I even say it another way, work in partnership with your elected official on that issue. And I, I know for a fact that you can get changed just by individuals organizing around the issue.
All right, I'm gonna put an organization together, this man on the P P A. We gonna talk about that. We gonna get to this food. And then we gonna talk about how we make that happen. Cause that's my first, my first thing, you know what I'm saying? My first day off, they got to go, really? But listen, y'all already know who it is, your boy Smooth, we got Kiada Johnson in the building, Cooking Up Two and Five, we be right back, let's go. Y'all already know who it is, it's your boy Smooth, Cooking Up Two and Five, man. We here with one of our esteemed sponsors, Shaquem of Tomlin and Co. A black, I don't even, how you, how you wanna be? What, what category do you put yourself in?
So you had it right, a black on watch micro brand.
There we go.
There you go. So we, um, you know, specialize in timepieces. This is my debut collection, this celestial.
Exquisite timepieces, I must say.
You like them? I see you got.
I love them, baby. You know, I had to get one. Shout out my man, shout out my man from Homeland Healthcare, you know, I mean, what is, Will House Homeland Healthcare now?
Oh, my man Mill.
Yeah, that's my guy. He put me on, I seen, I said, oh, I needs that. I needs me one, and you know, and you and I have since built our relationship now, and here we go.
No, definitely. I appreciate you having me on. So like I was saying, this is my debut collection, this celestial calendar. Made of three sixteen L stainless steel, Japanese six P double O Miyota movement, you know, sun, sunburst style. You know, luxury, man.
This is luxury. And, and what I like about it, man, is this shit is better than a lot of things that's on the market.
I appreciate that.
You know what I'm saying? I'm talking about the feel, the quality.
I appreciate that.
The look of it, like this, woo, you know what I'm saying?
I appreciate that, man.
They stopping and they looking every time, you know, I mean? This, this, this is that, this is that, man. So I definitely commend you on your, you know, your craftsmanship.
And that's what we specialize in craftsmanship. You're not just throwing stuff at the wall seeing with stick. Like I started designing this back in twenty twenty. And then like it took over the years for me to finally launch. And I just launched in April of this year, twenty twenty five. So I was working behind the scenes for five years trying to get this off the line.
Five years. Well, let the people know how they could get their hands on the Tomlin and Co.
You can reach me directly at Tomlin and, and Co. on Instagram, or you could hit me up on the website. Tomlin, Tomlin and Company dot com. That's T O M L I N A N D C O M P A N Y.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna make sure we put that at the bottom for y'all, man. So make sure y'all support. Go get y'all Tomlin and Co. You know, use Cooking Up Two and Five as your code. You know what I'm saying? We might throw a little extra off there for you.
It gets shipped out to you for free, Cooking Up Two and Five?
Yeah.
That's what we on.
There we go. Code Cooking Up Two and Five, give you some free shipping. I promise you, you get one of these, you not gonna need nothing else. I promise you.
We got it covered.
Every, every color, every flavor. And it ain't hitting you, breaking your head. I'm telling you, this is what you need, boy. Get you a Tomlin and Co. Y'all already know who it is, your boy Smooth, it's my guy Shaquem, and we outta here, let's go.
Appreciate you having me.
Y'all ready?
It's our favorite part of the show. That's your favorite.
Yes, sir.
Ah, chef, what you got cooking? You already know.
Y'all already know who it is, it's your boy Smooth, and it's my favorite part of the show, time to get into that food. Y'all already know we got Mr. Kiada Johnson in the building. And if you're a real fan of the show, then you gotta know Ms. Sarah from Nourish. You got to. This is, this is, I mean, this ain't her first rodeo. You have been here before. And I appreciate you. It's, it's so lovely seeing you again.
Yes, thank you for having me back.
So what you got for me today, Ms. Sarah?
Today we brought some delicious plant-based food for everyone to enjoy. We have our famous vegan mac and cheese. I brought some sauteed broccoli, cause everybody knows everyone loves broccoli, right? And then we are featuring our vegan ribs today, and then some fresh cornbread as well. It's called the soul food sensation.
The soul food sensation.
And then of course, we have seeded watermelon juice, because it's the summertime and we need some delicious natural seeded watermelon juice.
I love watermelon too. I be doing a watermelon diet here, they can't keep it, you know what I'm saying?
Gotta make sure you get the seeded though.
Yeah, yeah, seeds for real, cause I don't like the market though. They make it so hard to find a seeded watermelon in the market, it's retarded. I don't think they selling no more. But, um, yeah, this, this looks amazing. And for some reason, like I told you, when I think vegan, I don't think this is, this different. This looks special, so I can't wait to see what this hitting for. Let the people know how they can find you, how they can get themselves a wonderful plate like this.
Yeah, come and enjoy it with us at Nourish. We're at one seventy-seven West Gerard Avenue. Or you can follow us on Nourish Philly on Instagram, social media, all the different platforms.
There we go. Make sure y'all go down there and support Nourish Philly. Ms. Sarah, Kiada Johnson, your boy Smooth. Let's get back to the show, let's go. Y'all already know who it is, it's your boy Smooth, and we right back at it, still here with my guy Kiada Johnson. And listen, man, Ms. Sarah has blessed us. This is the time where we get to dive in and see what it's hitting for. I'm right at that mac and cheese, you understand?
Sprite. I love cheese.
Yeah, this, this different. And I feel better just knowing it's healthy, you know what I'm saying?
That's correct.
I mean, like I can overendulge and not feel bad about it.
That's correct.
Get that healthyitis. That mac and cheese.
Mac and cheese killing it.
That thing, yeah. Ribs is hitting. Well, everything I feel like you really wouldn't be able to tell if, if, if somebody didn't tell you that this was vegan or, you know what I mean, plant-based in any way. You wouldn't know.
I eat the meat.
You would not know at all. See, I could do this. You know, I be talking about going vegan and all that? I could do that. I'd probably be broke though, you know what I'm saying? I feel like that's the only thing about going vegan is expensive. But it's good.
I think knowing what to purchase, right? Also plays a role in how you go shopping. You shopping a lift, he'll be able to figure it out.
That's something, you know, we, we stubborn people. You know, we eat the same stuff we've been eating. We cook it the same way grandma used to cook it.
That's correct.
You know what I'm saying? We don't do too much switching up or crazy like that. So what made you go vegan?
Well, when I first ran for state representative, one of my staffers, we were in the campaign office and I was running for office, then one of my staffers showed a, a video called Meet Your Meat. And it showed me how the farmers operate the farm with chickens. How they operate with, um, pigs, all different types of animals, right? That left an impression on me. But also, this is probably the heaviest influence, is my wife full vegan. My whole house is vegan. I'm vegetarian. I'm not full vegan. I, I still eat cheese. Right? I eat some cheese pizza. If it's Brian's ice cream, which I probably won't have, but I'm not gonna turn it down. If it's not, you know, if it's milk and ice cream. But my wife is a hundred percent vegan. And so in terms of lifestyle, she know what inside and out, just in terms of her own upbringing and her being a vegan kinda helps because we not cooking chicken inside the house or, or beef hamburger.
And she was vegan when y'all met?
Absolutely. Might be Impossible Burger or Beyond Meat Burger. I don't know if you ever heard of them or not, but.
I did. I feel like those ain't, aren't those things a little controversial as well, like, like they're possible, it was like.
Process.
Yeah.
But ain't more process than a burger sitting on your, on your stomach for like four, or five, six, seven, eight months.
I was about to say years. I heard it. It only take seven years to process some of that stuff?
There you go. So your health is your wealth. And, you know, everything is a process for anybody, right? But black men, we die young, right? From a variety of different, preventable, uh, health diseases that we can prevent. And a variety comes down to what you put inside your body. And it's not easy, you know what I mean? Cause you talking about years and years of being conditioned, like you just mentioned. If, if, if grandma been serving chitlins all her life, right?
Still making hormones, hey, yeah.
And so I think everything is a process, you know what I mean? For me, and it was gradual. I ain't just wake up and say, okay, oh. It's gradual over a period of time, but definitely having a wife saying this, you know, her lifestyle and having an influence on me.
Did she, did she make you go down that road? Like, let's say you didn't marry her, you still would have been down that road?
Everybody asked me that. Oh, you only doing it cause of her? No, I didn't have a wife that said, no, it's all to meet him. Um, actually, we was together while I was still eating, you know what I mean? But when she started showing me, okay, about ninety percent of what you eating is seasoning, taste. You know what I mean? And once I start saying that, like, okay. And, and being introduced to another lifestyle of eating, you know what I mean? I wasn't eating sushi growing up down South Philly. Avocado roll.
Right, right, right. Eating good down there.
You know what I mean? And so it's a gradual process, but definitely having a good queen in my life, you know, is a positive influence on my health.
Hey, king need a queen. Did you want to try this rib? I feel like you need, I mean, so what is, are you allergic to the mushrooms or where you at with it?
No, I ain't allergic, I ain't, I ain't, I ain't allergic to them.
All right. Yeah, no, there you go. Definitely.
That's my man, my man.
See what that's hitting for.
She'll be working with.
Yeah, if you want, if you want, go ahead, there you go. Get busy, show them how you get busy.
Look, look, see, people also recognize that vegan meat got gristle.
Yeah. Trying to tell you still got that, that meat bite, yeah?
Oh, yeah, you know what? I feel like eating the mushroom. Okay, that's what's up.
Different, different.
I should just chill. We good though.
Kept the rib, huh?
That's what's up.
Before we went on break, you know, this time we, we gonna really have some conversation now, you know?
Absolutely.
It's a lot of things, a lot of problems, man. We got these potholes.
Yes.
Got P P A chasing us down every day. What do we do, like, are these things, things we can do something about? Like, why are P P A still around? Why do they still exist? And if they taking everybody cars and all their money, why we still got potholes? This is what everybody in the comments, they telling me, ask yours.
Let me go with the potholes first, right? I do know for a fact under this administration, our mayor has been investing heavily on our budget in terms of how we repair not only potholes, but doing streets all over across the city of Philadelphia, right? So it's miles and miles of roads that we investing under each budget, millions of dollars to specifically address potholes. Is it perfect? No, but I do see the numbers, right? I think what we probably have to do a better job of is, a lot of potholes you see come from also development that's taking place in different communities, right? So let's say you got a street with like four or five potholes, we do that street over. But then somebody go build a new house on the street, they dig the street up, right? Don't put it back how they supposed to, and next thing you know, you riding down the street, boom, load up, right? Now, here's something the public probably don't know. If you do hit a pothole, you can call the city of Philadelphia. To have your pothole addressed in terms of, if it reached a certain threshold of how you hit the pothole and it damaged your car, there could be opportunities to, you, opportunity for you to be able to recoup a portion of what you spend based upon that actual pothole, right? P P A, that's a whole different conversation. I'll have an answer for you. Don't nobody out there listen, don't call me for a ticket. I can help you, right? And so that's a whole different conversation.
We gotta get to the bottom of P P A, baby, before you leave.
Don't understand, that's a whole different beast over there. But here's what I will say, we have a new executive director over there from South Philly, boy named Richie Laser, right? In all seriousness, um, I do believe if people have legitimate like issues and concerns in terms of how they operate, they take them to them, cause he, he a neighborhood guy, right? Second Street, South Philly guy, um, very, very understandable, right? Not about, let me get a million tickets to reach a budget, right? And, and he works for the city in terms of some of our policies to try to make the city a safer city when it comes to transit. Those who, who, who are driving in cars, but also just transportation just in general.
Is, so is P P A a part of the city?
No, it's not at all.
I heard it, it, like it once was and then, I don't know, like they separated or?
I understand what you're saying. Who controls? It was once controlled by the city. And then there was a takeover on the state that took it over, yes. That's correct.
Do money from P P A go to the city?
Do we get some funding from the city? That's a good question. I'll double check on that one.
Cause I, I think we, we wondered like, if they taking all our money, what they doing with it? Where it's going?
Well, one, one, a significant portion of P P A money go to the school district. A lot of people don't know that. Part, part of the requirement to operate is a portion of the money goes into the school district. And actually, actually more is supposed to go to the school district that we taking a look at. But yes, the agreement is that a portion of the money goes toward the school district.
Yeah, and P P A gotta start doing refunds like Uncle Sam do.
Okay.
You know, like once a year, you could go.
Once you get a refund.
Send how much money you didn't gave them over the time and they send you a portion back. They gotta do something, cause this, I feel like certain things, and this, this, this is the part, my, my thing with the city. Certain things, they just, to us, don't really help us. And we don't see the benefit of it, and it just seems like another thing stacked against the small guy. You know, when you worrying about the tickets, now you got the red light, you got the speed and one on the boulevard, forty miles per hour.
But you know why, right?
Butt naked, it's crazy.
Most, most, most dangerous road.
What, the boulevard?
Philadelphia, they run you over, keep on going.
On the boulevard?
Yeah, you guys, you gotta do something to slow down, gotta be a little, that's a, you know, a little bit accountability, you know what I mean? Other than that, people just run roughshod. Kids getting, listen, kids getting hit, we got more vehicle homicides we've ever had. Kid walk across the street, old pushman walk across the street. Everybody trying to get somewhere fast. So there gotta be some level of accountability. Everybody could get passed.
But they really do be feeling like we getting our pockets picked left and right. And then, then y'all just start this new thing where S U P A now got the cameras in the front and they gonna give out tickets.
Get off the bike lane, yeah. You, you in the bike lane or you in the, you in the, and that's not the bike lane, it's the parking lane. If you in the parking loading zone, the bus come up, you gotta keep it, you gotta, you gotta keep it moving.
It's getting crazy, it's, we need to get like, um, some cars, where you know how we get food stamps? Just give us, you know, uh, parking stamps.
Parking stamps.
Yeah, like everybody get a hour, a free two hours a month or something like that.
No, we do that already.
Your card.
No, we do that already. I think on Sundays at a certain time, you don't pay downtown. You get a free pass.
We don't even go out on Sundays no more. I sent out a memo, I told people, don't even invite me to your kid's birthday party if it's on a Sunday. Sunday is at home, family day.
Sure, understood.
Yeah, I don't even want, come on, Sundays.
And I think some holidays.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying?
Some holidays, you go downtown shopping, you know what I mean?
The day before Christmas or something like that?
They give you a pass, something like that. Try to work with you a little bit.
Yeah, y'all gotta give us some wiggle room, baby, like, see, this is where I feel like we gotta build that connect, you know what I'm saying? If we all have a day where the streets just come out and voice their opinions on stuff, and then y'all pick like five things.
No, we always do. So, so, well, here, here's the, here's the official process. In city council, right, we have a, a period called public comment, right? And most of the time, depending on what the topic is, and most topics are pretty general, right? You come down to USA, here's why I feel we need to change X, Y, Z about P P A, Philadelphia Police Department, um, parks and rec, um, streets with the potholes, right? You'll have that opportunity, and then also, from an education standpoint, right? Each year we do a budget process where there's public comment, right? And so you organize during that time period and come down and say, hey, listen, y'all about to pass this budget. Here's what we think y'all should do, here's what we think y'all shouldn't do. And that's an open forum, it's public, and it also gives you an opportunity again to hold your elected official accountable, right? But also work in partnership with your elected official, right? And also you may inform them about something they might not even know about. Most of my best ideas come from the community, right? Listening to what people say. All right, like, we may say this jokingly, but I'll have a conversation, look. We talking about P P A, you know, people feel like they under siege, right? Let's take a look at maybe some of the things and maybe make people feel like we're not just here to take your money, right? You might have a day where, well, we, I know we have Sundays, but let's be creative. So people don't feel like P P A is just a bad guy, right? Cause obviously no one likes P P A, like at all, period. And I get it, you know what I mean, a thousand percent. But, um, I would legitimately have that type of conversation with my guy. But also to everybody that's listening, you can also always come down on city council on any given issue and say, here's what I believe that we should be doing, here's what I believe we shouldn't be doing, right? Engage your elected official to work on that issue.
Right. Do you think, do people take that opportunity? Like, do, do, do change come from those things?
Absolutely, absolutely. I create an office of victims advocate, right? This is an office that supports. Mothers and fathers and families who have lost loved ones to gun violence, right? That came from somebody approaching me. They said, as elected officials, y'all talking about police reform? Talking about criminal justice reform? But what about us? The mothers who lost their kids to gun violence? Who's advocating for us? Who's on the front line for us? We think you should have an office that deals nothing but advocate for us. I said, okay, all right, looked at a model on the state, which is called the Office of Victims Advocate. Created it in the city of Philadelphia. We deal with issues where we know hurt people hurt people around the issue of trauma. When somebody lose a loved one to gun violence. We provide resources and support for those families. We know also one thing I'm proud of, we recently just got done in a budget. We increased the support, the subsidy for funeral expenses. Every time there's a homicide, I get a call. Can we get a help with our funeral for our repass, right? And most people may or may not know, if you lose a loved one to gun violence, right? The city will pay a portion, right, of the funeral expenses, right? But because of inflation, the amount was something like fifty, six hundred, maybe eight, eight thousand, right? And funerals cost much, much more now. So we advocated, we fought in the budget to make sure now when families do come, right? Not only is the amount increased, right? But also there was a, there was a clause that said, if you were a part of a homicide, right? Like maybe you caused a homicide, but that's not your mom's fault. Before they would hold the mom accountable, say you can't get any funding at all for the funeral expenses. But I'm proud that now we changed the policy that even if you were a part of it, right?
Right.
Right or wrong, right? Still not gonna hold mom and dad accountable because they living in poverty and they can't pay for a funeral. Those ideas came from the people. You know what I mean?
Yeah, that's dope.
And that came from the people.
I definitely, I want to get into, you know, your, your plans for the future in politics. But before we get there, I got my own little personal thing. Once again. I, I, I learned that there's a lot of ways to make money with or through the city. Like there's something called the Act one thirty five, um, workout was telling me about. I mean, Anthony Goodway. He goes down there and I guess they fix up properties that's owned by the city or something like that. Or that's like condemned properties where they can make money. Long story short, there's a lot of ways. That people can make money through the city, but we don't know anything about. Like, how do we get to a point where the city is more transparent with the opportunities? And also giving us the resources and know-how? You get what I'm saying? Like when you talk about the black businesses and, and helping people get funding, like.
Yes.
I'm, I'm, I might want to go get a, a, SBA, but it's hard. I've, I've still doubt. It's not a simple thing and.
Yes.
Your credit might be shot from some others, but I might have a great business.
Absolutely. We have two, two, two particular agencies that we work with in the city of Philadelphia. That particularly supports, um, small businesses and large businesses as well. One is the Commerce Department, right? Commerce Department is particularly the agency that specifically does nothing but provide support for startups. But also taking businesses that have been already operating to the next level. And also provide, um, funding. We just started a program called the Catalyst Program recently. That provides a significant amount of funding for businesses that are already, um, operating. Now, again, I agree with you. Probably as a city, we gotta do a better job to get that information out. But that is a program. Uh, also I represent. An agency called PIDC, Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation. It's inside the Navy Yard, right? People may or may not know the city of Philadelphia, we have our own bank, our own bank, right? And it's called PIDC. So people come and get lines of credit, right? Um, and also other type of support systems to help them build their businesses. So every year we do something called Met Week, right? Which, which is Minority Education Development Week. Where we bring ministers from around the city, right, to learn about what those opportunities are in the Navy Yard.
Oh, that's dope.
And, and you're right though, like, you know, our people perish for a lack of knowledge, right? So you definitely got a point. We have to continue making sure we utilizing all the platforms that's available. To make sure people know about, um, what's going on.
Right, right. That's so. I mean, and, and shout out to you also doing that, the, uh, the event you just had, your yearly, um.
Community Appreciation Day.
There we go.
Yes, yes.
I think that's dope. I think things like that are good ways and great ways to keep the, the connection between, you know. Us and the, the city, you know, just to, everybody recognize each other, we sharing information. You giving out information at these events. You know, some people only want to come out when it's something free or something nice.
Yeah. And it's the way to connect. You know what I mean? The entertainment is great, right? And everybody want to come to the entertainment.
That's just the hook.
But while I got you there, we got all these resources to help you improve the quality of your lives as well.
So what's, what's your plans? Like where do you see yourself going, uh, when it comes to politics? And what's your long-term goal?
I want to be the best city council president that I can be, right? That's my primary focus right now, in the moment. You know what I mean? Because I enjoy what I'm doing. I love what I'm doing. I got some great plans that I'm doing. As a district council person, as a city council president that I want to work on. I'm very, very passionate around the issue of poverty, right? And finding strategic ways to lift us out of poverty, right? I got major, major corporations in my district where we sitting around the table looking at. Them saying they need a workforce, right? And we not talking about jobs that require a degree, right? We got shipbuilding companies in the Navy Yard that's looking for people. Two shipbuilding companies in the Navy Yard that's looking for people. We got another company that build barges that looking for welders, right? And they saying, but the issue is, Mr. Johnson, we need people, right? And so as I move forward, my overall agenda and strategy is making sure we address poverty, right? By building generational wealth and putting people to work. That's my number one goal right now. Because at the end of the day. We can't be the largest, biggest, poorest city in America, right? And then other than that, if I'm going to do this work, what's the point if I'm not addressing that issue, right?
That's one of the main things.
Like I didn't run and be, become elected official to be yacht. You know what I mean? I've been yacht, but now as an elected official, let me pay it forward to the, the same way somebody pulled me to the side and said. You can do some things better, but also it's incumbent upon me and I take it seriously to improve the quality of life. Of the constituents that I represent. And that's everybody, you know what I mean? But I just happen to represent also some impoverished areas, right, that need the support. And I have to be on the front line advocating for them, but also making sure we addressing the issue of education equality, right? Because Malcolm X said, education is your passport to the future, right? And so when I came on early, I talked about my educational pedigree, but that wasn't the brag, right? It's only to talk about how education has brought my horizons beyond the block, right? You can do more than just be on eighteen and Dickerson. There's a whole new world out there, right? And, um, so from that aspect, making sure that our young people get a quality education.
They get to see that too.
Yeah, they have to see that, you know what I mean? Have to.
Do you see yourself bringing, uh, trades back to the schools or trying to bring that back?
Actually, that started already.
You did?
That, no, not from me though. Not from me, not from me. Um, the former council president and also this current mayor have been working on apprenticeship programs. Let me, let me change that. Not the trades in the schools yet, no.
Okay.
Would I, I would like to see that, right? Because I believe, I went to Bach High School. And so by trade, I'm a machinist, right? And so that's where I took at Bach. But also my background was in, I did, um, mechanical drawing. I know how to do, I know how to do spot welding as well. And the other course I took, um, was carpentry, right? And you know, you take, you take three courses and, and obviously machine shop and you gotta pick one. But those trades I, I'll never forget, right? I always know how to use my hands, right? And it's decided to go to school. Um, hopefully, um, that will be a part of your agenda to put your trades back in the school. One of the biggest things right now, I know, is putting black men teachers back into the school, right? Because right now inside our school system, that isn't the case. And so, um, that's a priority. Um, but also making sure that, uh, when you, when it comes to academic achievement. Uh, we're doing everything possible to make sure our young people, uh, are prioritized and supported in the process. Because when you talk about education, even before you get to apprenticeships, we got to deal with the issue of trauma.
Yeah.
You got two, three kids getting murdered at a bus stop. Their homies gotta go to school the next day.
Yeah.
Everybody's at the bus stop, gotta go to school the next day, right? I'm just working to make sure we aggressively make sure we address the issue of trauma and post-traumatic stress. Of our children in the schools.
Yeah, that's major.
Those, those are just a couple of things I'm very, very passionate about.
That's good, man. And it's good to, to see that there is somebody that does have our best interest at heart. You know what I'm saying? I'm happy to know that you in there representing us, knowing that you come from where we come from and you understand. Because I feel like that's definitely something that's needed. You need somebody that represents you and that's willing to do those things and make those changes. So I really appreciate you coming through and connecting with us in this way.
I appreciate you having me. And, and I'll wrap up on this, right? One, I, I like the platform that y'all are doing to keep up the good work. And anywhere I could be supportive of you. And your team will hesitate to let me know. And I also recognize in terms of me having a mentor and all the things that I've been through and I have to get where I'm at. I gotta give a shout out to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Because for me, that will help me in terms of my faith, right? Become the person who I am, right? And I never consider myself a typical elected official because I know for a fact, none of them have seen the things that I have seen. And I know just from the environment that I grew up in, right? But if it was not been for my faith to allow me to be the person who I am today. And my grandma praying over me, you know what I mean? When I'm out in the streets and making sure, which used to say. And my mom used to say, I'm not gonna lock my door. I mean, I can't go to sleep until you come in the house. And I used to be like, oh, mom, I'm cool. But now as a dad.
You understand?
I got an eight-year-old and a ten-year-old, right? And we still in South Philly. We still growing up in the neighborhood, right? I understand, right? But I know if it had not been for the prayers of my grandmother and my faith. We wouldn't be on the podcast talking about me being the first African American to represent the second council medic district. Being the president of the city council and a former state rep. So I carry it with grace and humility.
Yeah, man, that's, that's, you setting forth for a great presidency. Like, you know what I'm saying? You showing the kids what you can do, what you can overcome and, and really still be out here and stand for something, man.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate you coming through.
Thanks for having me.
Wonderful having you, man. Appreciate the conversation. Listen, man, make sure y'all, you know, check Kingata Johnson out. Make sure y'all vote, you know what I'm saying? Anytime, every year. Put him at the top of that ballot. Y'all already know it is. Your boy Smooth and it's Cooking Up two one five. We out here. Let's go.